Everyone who's here, Happy St. Patrick's Day to all. Even though I don't have my green on, I am Irish originally. I'm Kathy Thompson, President of the Red Clay School Board. The Board is thankful you've come out tonight and grateful to have you here. The March 17th, 2021 Board Meeting of the Red Clay School District is called to order. It is 7:01 PM. This meeting is being held electronically. On March 12th, 2020, as everyone knows, Governor Carney issued a declaration of a state of emergency for the state of Delaware due to a public health threat. The state of emergency allows all public meetings of executive, branch public bodies, including boards of education, to be conducted electronically, either by means of telephone conference call or video conference call, or a combination thereof. We are holding this meeting as a hybrid meeting, so people can access the meeting remotely via Zoom or in person at Cab Calloway School of the Arts. Since the beginning of the state of emergency, we've had a number of hybrid and solely electronic meetings using Zoom, and we seem to continue to learn something new at each meeting. We thank you for your continued support and patience as we continue to encounter and work through new issues. The information regarding this meeting, including information on how to access the meeting in person and/or electronically, was published on March 10th, 2021, on the Red Clay School District website under the Public Notices section. Individuals may participate in this meeting either via Zoom conferencing or in person at Cab Calloway School of the Arts, and may speak publicly by completing the public comment form that's available and submitting it at least one half hour prior to the start of a meeting. If electronic, in order to speak, you must have provided a complete Zoom name, first and last name, on the public comment form, and it must match what shows on your Zoom account in order to be recognized. If for some reason you are signed up as a speaker and present but not called on, please raise your hand in the Zoom app and our helpful staff, Maria Stevens and Tony Clemmons, will assist you. As a courtesy to others and to prevent unnecessary disruption, all devices will be muted unless and until a person is recognized to speak. School Board members appearing in person will have active mics. Those accessing it electronically will only have their mics activated when they text us and indicate they want to speak and/or during votes. We limit unmuting of both in person and on Zoom because it creates a lot of feedback in the room, and we'll get a taste of that, so please bear with us. School Board members are both in person and remote via Zoom. In order to maximize the effectiveness and orderliness of the meeting, we will do the following. We will have a roll call vote for each item to be voted on. Each school board member should identify themselves by name prior to speaking, and for everyone's notice, this meeting is being recorded electronically. Okay, so now we go to the Pledge of Allegiance. So we will say that. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Okay. So, first item, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Ms. Sabo moves, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Casper seconds. Any comment at all? Okay, if not, Maria will take a roll call vote, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Dr. Bones?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion passes.
Thank you, Maria. And now we have recognitions, so I will acknowledge Ms. Taylor Greene to do the recognitions for us.
Good evening, can everyone hear me?
And I believe Taylor, Ms. Greene is remote.
Yes, can everyone hear me?
Yes, hi.
Okay, good evening, and thank you, Mrs. Thompson, and everyone who's tuning in for these special recognitions to celebrate recent achievements of students, staff, and other individuals in Red Clay Schools. First up, in a recent investigative report, NBC 10's Claudia Vargas described how school truancy rates have been going up throughout the Philadelphia region as a result of virtual learning, particularly among students of color. When the NBC 10 investigators heard about how districts like ours have made it a priority to try to connect all families with the tools needed to learn virtually, they were eager to meet some of the folks doing this work on the ground, and we took them straight to our small but mighty team of visiting teachers. In Red Clay, visiting teachers, sometimes known as truancy officers, have been hard at work helping students to stay connected during the pandemic, often stepping in when parents don't know where to turn for help. Visiting teachers worked to assist the school buildings to be in compliance with state law and Red Clay's attendance policies. They are there to support and enhance the work done at the building level and to intervene in situations where building efforts fail to produce a change in a student's daily attendance. They also assist in the early identification and monitoring of students with patterns of irregular or non-attendance. They assess and investigate the family situation through phone contacts and home visits, and they act as an advocate for students needing further services and connecting the families to these resources. As captured in the NBC 10 story, when a mother was recently stuck in a hotel room with her three school-age daughters, she just assumed that without internet, they couldn't attend class. Then, when Red Clay went to a hybrid model of virtual and in-person learning, she didn't have transportation to get the girls to class. I didn't know all the resources in the beginning as far as internet, as far as the laptops, transportation, even down to their school supply, as she said. Red Clay's visiting teachers got in touch with the mother sometime in late October. They immediately connected the family with hotspots, gift cards for clothes, food, and bus passes. And through a federal grant program, the district was able to provide additional help for the family, including the security deposit and rent assistance for their new home. The first and third graders are back to in-person learning four days a week, while the seventh grader is still fully virtual. Tonight, we want to shine a light on these dedicated professionals. Starting from the left of the slide, Felicia Bennett, a visiting teacher since 2005, who serves students and staff from Balt's, Brandywine Springs, Conrad, Cook, McCain, Richardson Park, Stanton, and Warner, with additional roles on the Red Clay Dropout Prevention Team and the Red Clay Diversity Committee. Next, Ebony Jones, who serves students and staff from Cab Calloway School of the Arts, First State School, Forest Oak, HB Middle, Heritage, Dickinson, Meadowwood, McCain, and Skyline. Next, Robert Smith, a former special education teacher who now serves students and staff from Ritchie, Marbrook, Skyline, Dickinson, North Star, HB DePont, AI High, and AI Middle. And lastly, Kelly Ortiz, a visiting teacher who serves students and staff from AI High, AI Middle, Highlands, Linden Hill, Moat, Lewis, Stanton, and Shortridge. On behalf of all of us at Red Clay, thank you, visiting teachers, for all that you are doing to help students and their families overcome challenges and stay connected to school during COVID-19. Our next slide and our next recognition, the eighth-grade Spanish immersion team. So back in 2011, a group of students took the first steps to becoming Red Clay's first cohort to participate in the dual-language immersion program at William C. Lewis Dual-Language Elementary School under then-Governor Merkel's World Language Expansion Initiative. The parents of these students understood the value that the immersion program could bring to their children and to their future as they could ultimately become fully bilingual, bilingual, and socioculturally competent. In this immersion program, elementary students spend half of their school day learning in English and the other half learning in Spanish. School staff worked closely with the students' parents to help them stay invested in the program by guiding them to the middle school immersion track at Skyline Middle School, where for the last three years, they've spent 30% of their school day learning in Spanish. Now, eighth graders. The students recently participated in the ACTFL, Assessment of Performance Toward Proficiency in Languages, which is an assessment of standards-based language learning that assesses a student's ability to engage in personal, social, and academic communication through reading, writing, speaking, and listening. We're thrilled to announce that the students scored at the top of the state when compared with students, with other students taking the same assessment. What's more, though, the students demonstrated a level of language proficiency that opens a number of new opportunities at the high school and college levels on their path to bilingualism and bilinguism. Specifically, they have already met the high school world language requirement for graduation and earned four world language credits that will appear on their high school transcript. They are now eligible to take Advanced Placement Spanish Language and Culture courses as a ninth grader. Beginning in 10th grade, they can extend their immersion language and content knowledge into the college environment through dual enrollment courses. And if they reach a performance level three or four out of four on the state's Smarter Balance Reading Assessment, they will earn a certificate of multiliteracy. The certificate is Delaware's version of the CLF Bilinguism, which is a national response to recognize the importance of language learning as a critical career and workplace skill. The certificate is both a tangible reminder to students of the benefits of bilingualism and multilingualism and a credential that can help differentiate them as an applicant for a job, college entrance, or the military. On behalf of Red Clay Schools and all of our immersion program staff at William C. Lewis Dual-Language Elementary School, Skyline Middle School, and Alexis DePonte High School, we want to express how proud we are of their accomplishments. Since entering this program in elementary school, this cohort has set the standard for all immersion programs across the state of Delaware. As they prepare to transition to the immersion program at AI High next year, they represent the first group of Delaware students to enter high school. Please join me in congratulating the following students: Cristal Alarcon Flores, Christian Ambrosio Diaz, Rebecca Bright, Sergio Carvalho Martinez, Charlene Fuentes Aguilar, Yandel Fuentes Vasquez, Gonzola Garcia Aguilar, Maliani Garcia Reyes, Astrid Guerrero Jimenez, Euraze Hernandez Tokamateko, Lindsay Ned Juarez, Siani Lopez, Sarai Luna Gomez, Yessenia Mendez Pablo, Suleika Sandoval Garcia, Yasmin Saúce Analco, Carlos Solis, Ariely Laseca Bentera. In addition, we want to take a moment to recognize the dedicated school leaders and staff members who have helped to build Red Clay's Spanish immersion program over the years. From Lewis Elementary School, Principal Mark Phelps and the entire Lewis immersion staff; from Skyline Middle School, Principal Noreen La Sorsa; Assistant Principal and Immersion Coordinator Pete Matrinko; and Spanish immersion teacher Antonio Amoras Ortiz; from Alexis DePonte High School, Principal Kevin Palladini and immersion teacher Niels Markun; and from the district level, Anna Richter, who serves both Red Clay and the Delaware Department of Education as a dual-language immersion instructional specialist. To all the students and families who are tuning in tonight, congratulations on your success and best of luck at AI High in the fall. Next slide. Okay, now it's time for a big Red Clay recap. Tonight, we're celebrating student athletes and the staff who supported them in an unprecedented fall and winter season. Starting with AI High School. In the fall, the AI Tigers ended their football season with a victory at Glasgow, two players named to first-team All-Conference and constant support from the cheer squad and the marching band, who were able to perform at all four home games. The boys' cross-country team fell just one win short of an undefeated season, and the field hockey team defeated Glasgow 5-0 on senior day with two players named to first-team All-Conference. The girls' volleyball team competed admirably until they had to fold due to a loss of players, and the boys' soccer team was able to complete the season despite having only nine healthy players. In winter basketball, the Tigers hosted and won their first-round tournament game against Milford, 73-53, joined by the amazing Amira Trader, who became the first girl to play on a boys' varsity team in Delaware after her season was canceled due to a shortage of players. The wrestling team finished one match shy of the Blue Hen Conference Flight B title, while the boys' swim team defeated Odessa 12-0 with only one swimmer, and the girls' swim team posted a record of 4-4. Thank you to Athletic Director John Barr, Athletic Trainer Brandon Slosson, Transportation Coordinator Joyce Peterson, School Nurse Ruth Ann Turner, Warehouse and Supply Coordinator Mark Watkins, and all of the coaches who helped the AI Tigers to have a safe and successful return to play. Next slide. All right, next up, the Force from Cab Calloway School of the Arts and the Charter School of Wilmington. In the fall, the marching band was able to perform at all the home games, and five football players were selected to the Diamond State Conference All-Conference Team. The cross-country teams were conference champions, with the girls' team being the state's Division One runner-up. The field hockey team made their third straight appearance in the state tournament, and the girls' volleyball team advanced to the DIAA quarterfinals. The boys' and girls' basketball teams competed in the DIAA state tournament, and the boys' and girls' swim teams were DSC champions, with the boys being the state runner-up and the girls placing third in the state. At the state meet, swimmers Noah Reese and Georgia Colburn took first place. The indoor track team and the wrestling team also competed in the DIAA state tournament. Thank you to Athletic Director Chris Eddy, Building Chief Monte Perino, Athletic Trainer Craig O'Ham, School Nurses Karen McCall and Phyllis Waller, and all of the coaches, managers, COVID Response Team members, and volunteers who supported the Force this year. Right, and now the Red Wolves. At Conrad, the Red Wolves celebrated a big win against St. Elizabeth's in football. The marching band showed tremendous support in restarting activities, and the cheerleaders brought energy to the sidelines. The girls' cross-country team placed third in states, and Katrina Holloway and Nora Wolford were named Cross-Country Coaches of the Year. The boys' soccer team was down two goals with 20 minutes left against Archmere, but they came back to tie it up and ended in a draw. The boys' basketball team saw a 9-5 regular season record with a first-round win in the state tournament. The girls' basketball team celebrated 12-2 regular season record, first and second-round wins in the state tournament, and their fifth straight conference championship. Janila Whittlesley scored her 1,000th point, and she and Shay Jackson were named Conference Players of the Year. The girls' swim team had a 6-3 regular season record and placed sixth in the state finals. Six wrestlers competed in the state tournament, and altogether, six Red Wolves were named to first-team All-State and Cross-Country Soccer and Swimming. Thank you to Athletic Director Pat Williamson, Assistant Athletic Director Rob Naylor, COVID-19 Coordinator Melody Brown, Athletic Trainer Renee Allen, Dean Copeland and the custodial team, and all of the coaches who helped the Conrad Red Wolves to have a safe and successful return to play. Okay. At the John Dickinson School, the girls' cross-country team finished the season 3-2, and the field hockey team finished 7-4, just missing the top 12 cutoff for the state tournament. The girls' volleyball team was named Blue Hen Conference Flight B Champions, and head coach David Lee was named Flight B Coach of the Year. Two players made first-team All-Conference. Three other fall athletes made first-team All-Conference in soccer and field hockey. In the winter, the boys' basketball team finished 7-4, qualified for the state tournament, and saw two players make first-team All-Conference. The girls' and boys' swim teams finished their season strong, with both being co-champions of the Blue Hen Conference Flight B. On the girls' team, Abigail Campion made first-team All-Conference and qualified for states. And on the boys' team, Sammy Buffano broke the school record in the 100-yard and qualified for states in three events. Thank you to Athletic Director Andy Dick, Athletic Trainer Samantha Chappa, School Nurse Donna Watson, all of the Dickinson coaches, and the entire Ramley for helping the Rams to have a successful fall and winter season. Okay, at DMA, the Seahawks finished the football season 5-2 and saw eight players make first-team All-Conference, with cheerleaders doing a remarkable job to keep the energy up at home games when there were few fans allowed due to COVID restrictions. The cross-country team finished second in the conference, and DMA's Quinn Odell was named overall conference champion. The field hockey team won its first-ever playoff game, and three players made first-team All-Conference. The girls' volleyball team finished third in the state with two players making first-team All-Conference, and Jen Johnson named Conference Coach of the Year. In boys' basketball, DMA finished the season 9-5 with two players making first-team All-Conference. The swim team competed at states, and the wrestling team won the conference and finished second at states, with Seahawk Dom Sama placing third. The ice hockey season is still underway, and the Seahawks are currently 6-2. Thank you to Director of Athletics Jeremy Jean, Athletic Trainer Krista Capelli, School Nurse Paige Dolan, and all of the coaches, team moms, and support staff who have helped the Seahawks soar this year. And lastly, at McCain, it was an exciting football season as the Highlanders defeated the AI Tigers for the first time in 15 years. The boys' soccer team finished 6-4 and made the DIAA state tournament. The Unified Flag Football Team finished 3-1, also making it to the state tournament. In the winter, McCain hosted the DIAA diving state championships with Mika Riley competing. McCain's Alicia King was selected as the Blue Hen Conference Girls Swim Coach of the Year. The Unified Basketball Team finished 2-1 and hosted a DIAA state tournament game. The Highlanders won their second consecutive Flight B championship in wrestling and competed in the DIAA state championships. Thank you to Athletic Director Matt Carr, Assistant Athletic Director Dwayne Pritchett, the school health and custodial teams, and all of the coaches and volunteers who helped the Highlanders have safe fall and winter seasons. To see more sports shout-outs, please visit our Facebook album for a complete fall and winter recap this Friday. Thanks to everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
And Madam President, before we move on to public comment, I do want to take this time once again to thank our visiting teachers,
Absolutely.
the program, Spanish immersion program at Skyline Middle School, and to those students who will be going on to become AI High School Tigers. And then to all of our athletic directors, coaches, building administrators, sports staff, and families alike, who've been able to put on two successful seasons for our student athletes this year, both our fall and our winter season. While it might not be ideal, and we've had our struggles, the reality of it is that there are student athletes across the nation who still have yet had the opportunity to actually participate in the sport that they committed their lives to. And so we're fortunate again in Red Clay not only to have had the opportunity to have a fall and a winter season, now going into our spring season, but more importantly, honoring the hard work and effort of our student athletes. So thank you to all of those staff members who put in the long hours to adhere to, you know, protocols and such to ensure and navigate this pandemic, but yet giving our student athletes the opportunity to compete in the field of play. So thank you. And I also want to thank Mr. Golder for his hard work and effort at the district office level and working behind the scenes to also help coordinate that along with our athletic directors. So kudos to all of our secondary schools for a job well done on behalf of our student athletes.
And I think that deserves a round of applause. Thank you all. Okay, now we move on to public comment. And again, thank you for coming out tonight to attend our meeting and share your thoughts. Under Board Policy 2006, the Board encourages the staff and community to share concerns regarding school issues and educational programs. Sharing can be done verbally, in person, and by speaking at our meeting. Under Board Policy 2006, the Board shall provide a period of time of up to 30 minutes at each board meeting for public comments, which time may be extended at the Board's discretion. Speakers are requested to give a written comment of their remarks to the superintendent, and speakers are limited to a three-minute time period. That time will be monitored, and you will be, if you're on, if you're remote, you will see the timer on the screen, and if you're in person, you will see the red, green, the green, red, yeah, the green, yellow, and red lights on the podium. At three minutes, the time is up, and the speakers will be muted. So thank you. And I do notice, and I wanted to note, we have a Red Clay School Board election coming up on May 11th. We are fortunate to have three candidates, all three of whom are here in person tonight, and they will be speaking, Janice Colmery, Keesia Neesmith, and Raffiela Choah. So thank you for such interest in Red Clay. And with that, we will move on to the public comment, and the first is Ms. Keesia Neesmith. Welcome, Ms. Neesmith.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
So my name is Keesia Neesmith, and I'm very excited to be here today. I am a parent of two lovely children, one who attends Conrad Middle School in sixth grade, James, and then senior at Charter School Wilmington, Naya. And so I've been in the district for some time and been in Delaware for over 20 years, and I just really am excited to come here to share about what I plan to do. My students, my children, have been part of Richardson Park School, Linden Hill, and Skyline. So we've been in the district in different places, and we've just been really impressed with what the district has done so far. As an educator for over 22 years, and as an administrator now, I am very excited to share and work with the community to help our schools move forward. I'm an innovative thinker and a dedicated person. And so through serving through different community resources, part of the sorority, Delta Sigma Theta sorority incorporated, and through Girl Scouts, which I've been a part of for over, I don't know, 30 years now, public service is one of the things that is close and dear to my heart. So I look forward to meeting all of you and working alongside of you to make sure that we can do the best for our kids possible. I like to say that in Spanish, some of it. Buenas noches, me llamo Keesia Neesmith y soy una madre de dos hijos. In Red Clay, mi hijo Asisya Conrad y mi hija va a graduate Charter School Wilmington. Antes asistían Richardson Park, Linden Hill, y Skyline. Para 22 años trabajaba como maestra y directora. Estoy aquí para introducirme y obtener su vota. Voy a trabajar para asistir al distrito y la comunidad con ayudar a los estudiantes a tener éxito. Estoy aquí para ustedes y espero que tendré su apoyo. Favor de visitarme al sitio de web keesianeesmith.com, gracias. So I have a website, so find out more about me, and I'll be around to your neighborhoods and talking with all of you, and I look forward to many conversations. You can visit keesianeesmith.com, that's K-E-C-I-A-N-E-S-M-I-T-H. So thank you for your time, President Thompson, Steam Board, and Superintendent Greene, and the rest of you here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Neesmith, appreciate that. The next person, I believe, is remote. Ms. DeShana Neal, welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Okay. Um, so I'm actually discussing my feelings on the policy that was discussed a few years ago and being brought back on bringing in extra protections for transgender and gender non-conforming students. And I have written something up for that. So greetings, thank you for having me tonight. My name is DeShana Neal, and I am the parent of two transgender daughters who are currently in Red Clay Schools. I want to start off by sharing a quote from a peer review article from the Journal of School Leadership. "A theory and practice of social justice is fraudulent when it does not fully address LGBTQ individuals and their intersections." Each year, several national organizations survey thousands of school-age youth from grades 6 through 12 on where they rate their school's climate in regards to safety and support as LGBTQ people. And while numbers are better than they were back in 2006, they still rank in double digits, double-digit percentages as a negative environment. The most common reasons are peer harassment is seen at 71% of LGBTQ students receiving this in school. Educator harassment, hearing negative comments about LGBTQ people from teachers is 57%. Physical and/or sexual assault is 38%, and the overall feeling of being unsafe in their school at 64%. I currently have two transgender students in the Red Clay District, with my oldest being the first documented trans child back in the early 2000s. During that time, I was told she would not be allowed to attend kindergarten unless she came as a boy, forcing me to pull her out to homeschool for a decade. She will be a senior next year and thrives in her affirming school. I am one fierce mama bear. My other child is in a supportive elementary school, but she has been harassed and asked sexually inappropriate questions by her peers. Please support this policy for my daughters and those LGBTQ students who may not have a fierce mama bear like myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Neal. Next up is Ms. Janice Colmery. Welcome, Ms. Colmery.
Good evening, Happy St. Patrick's Day. I don't have my green either, but I'm told when you're Irish, you don't have to wear it. My name is Janice Colmery. I have been a resident of the Red Clay School District for at least 27 years. Happy homeowner. I am a retired respiratory therapist, a proud graduate of Delaware Tech, and spent 25 years helping people breathe. I would like now, in my next chapter, to help the children breathe, all of them, our children. We've come a long way. I agree, we have school back in session to a degree, sports are back, but it's not enough. We need to get these children back to somewhat normalcy, get their social skills. I have a granddaughter, sort of, who was a first grader this year that missed it entirely. It's sad. I'm concerned about school safety in general. I have concerns about budgeting. Being retired, I have the time to devote to this position and the responsibility as a full-time position. And I'm prepared to give whatever it takes. I have nothing prepared. I felt that would be kind of disingenuous. I want to help. I feel that I can. I am well-known in the community on many levels. I'm sorry, that's me. I just, I think I can help these kids. I think I can help the board. I'm a very grassroots person. I don't have a lot of frill behind me. It's just me. So thank you. I hope you'll consider me, and I look forward to working with all of you to help our kids get back to normalcy and our teachers. They need to be safe as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Colmery. The next speaker, I believe, is remote, Mr. Stephen Fackenthal. Welcome, Mr. Fackenthal.
Good evening, Board. Thank you so much for your time. My name is Stephen Fackenthal, music teacher at Ritchie Elementary, and vice president of the Red Clay Education Association. I'm speaking in response to the district's presentation last month regarding diversity, recruitment, and retention in our workforce. While I applaud the district's push and fully support all efforts to diversify our workforce, as the data shows students do better, I'm not as confident in the district's fidelity to do everything it takes to retain that workforce. According to personnel reports from July 2020 to February 2021, Red Clay had 48 resignations. Compared that to Christine and Brandywine that had 17 and 24 in the same timeframe respectively. Back in September of 2019, I gave public comment about resignations as well. At that time, from August 2018 to August 2019, there have been 88 resignations from our district. Brandywine had 21 from February 2019 to August 2019 compared to our 37 in the same time period. Why are these numbers as such? The work to diversify and recruit is very little if we can't retain our workforce. It is well documented about teacher turnover in our country, especially in our high poverty schools. It is costly not only to retain, to retrain new educators, but to rebuild relationships with the staff, community, and most importantly, the students. As cited in multiple surveys and research studies, workplace conditions are listed as a major reason educators may leave a school or the profession altogether. While many factors may be outside of our control, workplace conditions are well within the scope to retain high-quality educators. Examples of such conditions include administrative support and communication, level of teacher collaboration, use of educators' time, and teacher empowerment and influence over school policy. If we are truly to respect the tireless work educators put forward for their students, then we need to think about the conditions we place upon them and how to improve that experience. Our working conditions are our students' learning conditions. According to the Learning Policy Institute's "Solving the Teacher Shortage: How to Attract and Retain Excellent Educators", the quality of administrative support is often the top reason educators identify for leaving or staying in the profession, often more important than salaries. The LPI also lists several ways to combat this. Invest in development of high-quality principals who work to include educators in decision-making and foster positive school cultures. Survey educators to assess the quality of the teaching and learning environment and to guide improvements. Incentivize professional development strategies and the redesign of schools to provide for greater collaboration. If we want to diversify, recruit, and retain our workforce, then we need to be sure we are doing everything possible to retain them. I am personally requesting this board look forward and look into why that workforce may deplete. Furthermore, as we enter contract negotiations this month, after it has become the hardest year to date for educators.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Fackenthal. And our last public speaker is Mr. Rafaela Choa. Welcome, Mr. Ochoa.
Thank you. Greetings. My name is Rafaela Choa, and I first would like to thank the board members and the superintendent for the opportunity to share a public comment this evening. With the allocated time, I'd like to share with you my background, a little bit about my background, and why I'm running for a seat on the Red Clay Consolidated School District Board. I'm a parent like many, and I've been a contributing member of the community for the past 18 years. From a professional career perspective, I'm a senior progressive business leader who listens first and looks for new ways to approach issues and opportunities that need creative solutions. As a board member, a board member is a trusted, is a trustee of the community that has been elected to serve all members of the community. As your future board member, I'm committed to serving all district administrative administration, parents, community members, and our valued PTA partners. I hold a master's degree. I am Hispanic. I am bilingual. So I truly understand adversity and obstacles that present many challenges for many. My background and years of experience of working across a broad range of cultural groups have prepared me to advocate on behalf of educators, students, families, to help support and drive into the best interests of the children that they have entrusted into us. If elected, I committed to working diligently on the following things. Number one, support keeping our schools safe and keeping the children safe. That is a key imperative. The board here has done a really nice job with that. Number two, focus on initiatives and policies that attract and retain the best teachers. This includes taking into consideration and elevating the voice of existing teachers and understanding and listening to those teachers and the needs that they are asking us for in changing times. I find that to be extremely important. Number three, focus on elevating the voice of parents to ensure that we are doing everything we can to elevate and assure those children and all children are successful. Those children have been entrusted to us. We have a fiduciary duty to ensure the success of those children and an obligation that we should feel passionate about it in our hearts. The votes on May 11, I would respectfully like to ask for your vote. Every vote will matter. I will ensure that I drive with passion, commitment, and I'll do everything in my interest to make you proud. Please vote for me, Rafaela Choa.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa. And that concludes public comment and recognition. So we move on to the approval of the minutes. And we have four different sets of minutes to approve here, so kind of bear with us. Do I have a motion to accept, to approve the minutes from the February 10, 2021 executive session?
Dr. Bone, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Jose Matthews.
Mr. Matthews, second. Okay. Maria, can we take a roll call vote, please? We can't, we can't hear you, Maria.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can now.
Okay. Dr. Bone?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to accept the minutes from the February 10, 2021 regular session?
So moved, Dr. Bone.
Sabo moves. Was that Dr. Bone?
Yes.
Can you second?
Yes.
Okay, Dr. Bone seconds. Ms. Sabo moves and Dr. Bone seconds. Okay, ready for a vote there, Maria?
Yes. Dr. Bone?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
Great. Now may I have a motion to accept the minutes from the February 15, 2021 district workshop?
So moved.
Mr. Matthews moves.
Second.
And Dr. second. All right, Maria, once again.
Dr. Bone?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes. And then
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
From the May 2, 2021 district workshop.
So moved, Jose Matthews.
Mr. Matthews moves. Is there a second?
Second, Dr. Bone.
Dr. Bone seconds. Okay, one last time here, Maria, on the minutes.
Dr. Bone?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
Thank you. So now we move on to action items.
Yes, so the first action item before the board is the 2021-2022 school calendar. So it is a recommendation that the Red Clay School Board of Education approve the school year calendar for the 2021-2022 school year estimate.
Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
So moved.
So which one? Ms. Sabo moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Casper seconds. Any discussion?
This is Jose Matthews.
Yes.
So I just wanted to bring up some of the communications and outreach that I've received from parents from the last school board meeting in regards to why we do not start until after Labor Day. I did have discussion with the district and with district personnel. And I just wanted to voice my support for the recommendation of the calendar committee. There's a lot that goes into it, and Doral could speak a little more to that if needed. But, you know, we are meeting the requirements and guidelines set by the state, and I feel comfortable with the calendar estimate. But thank you to all of those who did reach out.
Any other comments? Thank you, Mr. Matthews.
Of course.
Okay, hearing none. Maria, we're ready for a vote.
Dr. Bone?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
So the next action item?
It is recommended that the Red Clay Board of Education approve Board Policy 8004 as submitted, and this policy is the educational stability for children in foster care.
Is there a motion?
So moved. This is Jose Matthews.
Mr. Matthews moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Bone, second.
I think, Dr. Bone, Mr. Casper got it in first, so I'll let you too.
Dr. Bone can second.
Okay, Dr. Bone seconds. Any discussion?
This is Jose Matthews. I just wanted to thank the district for their work on this policy. And I wanted to know if, for the community's sake and for the public meeting, could some of the changes and input be highlighted quickly? Is that possible?
Sure, we have Dr. Broomhall here. I was at the board policy meeting, and there were several comments, all of which were incorporated. And we want to ensure that our children experiencing foster care are treated similarly to our children experiencing homelessness. And that was the Board Policy 8003, which we approved last month. So the floor is yours, Dr. Broomhall.
Okay, the first change that you noticed is the title. The title is now children experiencing foster care. Wanted the person first, language again. The other changes, comments were more about practice and not policy. There was the one recommendation to take language from 8003 to 8004. We checked with our partner DFS. They recommended that we did not do that. There is an MOU in existence between the district and DFS that outlines all those practices. And the actual two regulations as written were meant to be separate. So we did not make that change.
But in practice, they're treated similarly, correct, Dr. Broomhall?
Practice is the same, yes.
Yeah, the practice is the same.
And it's outlined in the MOU.
Okay. Any other, do you have any questions about that, Mr. Matthews, or anyone else?
I do not. Thank you all for your work.
Okay, so hearing no other questions. Maria, we're ready for a vote.
Dr. Bone?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
Okay, the next action item is the donation.
It is the recommendation that the Red Clay Board of Education approve the donation to North Star Elementary from Sterling Iverson as submitted. And again, this is a $5,000 donation from Sterling Iverson for North Star Elementary to be used for music projects that are not covered in the operating budget. And the fund will be named in honor of Jennifer Iverson.
Wonderful. Is there a motion?
So moved, Dr. Bone.
Dr. Bone moves. Is there a second?
Second, Jose Matthews.
Mr. Matthews seconds. Any discussion? I want to thank Mr. Iverson, because that's a fantastic donation. So thank you very much.
On behalf of North Star and the Red Clay Consolidated School District, thank you for your generosity.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, Maria, you're up again.
Dr. Bone?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
Okay, the next action item is the FY21 final budget.
So it is the recommendation that the Red Clay Board of Education approve the FY21 final budget as submitted.
Is there a motion to accept the recommendation?
So moved.
Mr. Casper moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Sabo seconds. Is there any discussion? Because we do have Ms. Florrie here, if we have any questions. Okay, hearing none, we will take a vote. Maria, please.
Dr. Bone?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
Last action item is the Newcastle County Tax Amnesty.
It is the recommendation that the Red Clay Board of Education approve an amnesty of residential school tax penalties in 2021, consistent with the previous amnesty authorized by Newcastle County in 2015.
Is there a motion to accept the recommendation?
So moved.
Ms. Sabo moves. Is there a second?
Second, Dr. Bone.
Dr. Bone seconds. It may be worthwhile for Ms. Florrie to explain this, just so that everybody is on board.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Newcastle County has reached out to all of the school districts in 2015, and I give you a copy of the previous motion. They're considering again doing a tax penalty amnesty. It doesn't waive taxes, but it waives the penalties that have accumulated. This is in light of the particular hardships related to COVID and what people in the community are going through. It is residential only. It would not apply to commercial. That was one of the questions we actually talked about at our CFRC meeting. But only the school board has the authority to waive or abate penalties on school taxes. And so that's why, in partnership with the county, they would look for your approval.
And this is a program the county runs from time to time?
It is.
Yes.
The last one was in 2015.
Okay. Are there any questions? Because we have Ms. Florrie. Okay, thank you. Maria, we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Dr. Bone?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
Thank you. So now we move on to the consent agenda. And it's the recommendation that the Red Clay Board of Education approve the action consent items A to D as submitted. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation?
So moved.
Mr. Matthews moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Casper seconds. So we're ready for a roll call vote, Maria, please.
Dr. Bone?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
Thank you. And now we move on to the superintendent's report. So the floor is yours, Mr. Green.
Thank you, President Thompson. Thank you to those who are here in person in attendance, and obviously those who are joining us via Zoom this evening. I just wanted to take an opportunity again to thank all of those who were recognized earlier during public recognition. And with that being said, Teacher of the Year winners will be announced on March 26. So thank you to everyone who nominated an outstanding Red Clay educator for the 2022 Teacher of the Year Program. We received over 900 nominations this year. And so next week, our selection committee members will pick a building winner from each of our schools. And please follow the hashtag #YayRedPlay on social media as schools announce their building level winners on March 26. Again, so thank you to all of those who took the time to nominate and recognize our wonderful educators throughout Red Clay. We also want to take this opportunity and celebrate what we determine beacons of hope during National Social Work Week. We celebrated our social workers who lighted the way by emphasizing the whole child in our schools, and also our family crisis therapists and behavioral health consultant partners who provide essential services to our students and families. And no more so now over the past year in terms of what we've all lived and experienced as it relates to the pandemic, the it relates to the pandemic, the stress, the anxiety, the overwhelming needs of our community and our students in particular. So our social workers and those who are in the buildings who not only avail themselves to providing supports to students but to families. And so we want to thank Katie Kravitz, Kelly Ortiz, and Adrian Simpson, and also our family crisis therapist and behavioral health consultants, Daniela Cross at Stanton Middle School, Dominique Daniego at Balt Elementary School, Jaclyn Durant at Ritchie Elementary School, Lindsay Dial at Marbrook Elementary, Mr. Theodore Giffson at Warner Elementary School, Ronaldo Tredo Marzo at William C. Lewis Dual Language Program, and Brandy Walker at Highlands Elementary School. So thank you again to all of our social workers, family crisis therapists and behavioral health consultants for all the work that you're doing and you continue to do. Another public notice, please accept your choice invitations. For those of you who have not done so yet, the choice window, in terms of accepting those applications, closes on this Friday, March 19. Again, this is an important deadline for our families who have submitted choice applications to attend Red Clay Schools for the upcoming school year. The deadline again is this Friday, March 19. So you should have received, for those families who applied online, you should have received an email on February 11. And those who apply via US Mail on the 12. So please check your inboxes on your emails for those invites. And if you don't see it in your inbox, by all means, please check your spam and/or your junk email to make sure that you're not missing out on an opportunity. Because again, for anyone who does not submit that by Friday the 19, it will be taken as a refusal of the invite that you had submitted. And I want to thank our choice office. I know we had some hefty conversations around the decline in choice enrollment this year. But again, we still have wonderful opportunities that are offered to families. And again, we would be remiss not to make you aware that please accept those by Friday the 19. And as many know, again, we still want to make sure that we elevate the fact that there are resources out there for families who, or students who need help. Again, you can call 1-800-969-Help or text DE to 741-741, or contact us online. Again, these are just resources for the mobile response and stabilization services. It's a hotline and also offers walk-in services. And then the text DE is a 24-hour support helpline, again, for anyone or use Red Clay's new counseling support request online at redclayschools.com and we'll connect you with a Red Clay School counselor. Again, we want to be mindful of not only the overwhelming academic needs, but the social emotional well-being and allocate and make our resources available to our school community for anyone who is in need of such supports. Just some general health and safety updates. As we begin to turn this corner, this week truly marks the year mark, and it truly has been a long year. Now I know what dogs feel like in terms of a year seven, because it feels like we've lived seven lifetimes over the course of this past year. And I know our community from our families, being a parent of three school-aged children, my wife is a high school educator. I haven't seen my parents in over a year. They live out of state. And so we've all endured our fair share of struggles throughout the course of this year. And so again, we're excited to see light at the end of the tunnel. In Red Clay, I just wanted to know from the vaccination standpoint, we had roughly seven, 1,732 educators and support staff members who have registered for the COVID-19 vaccinations through the Delaware Department of Education's clinic. Roughly half of them, about 815 or so, received their vaccination. And so that was roughly about 47% of those who registered through the Delaware Department of Education Vaccination Clinic, received them, all 1,732 received an opportunity or an invite to receive a vaccination. Those numbers do not include anyone who might have went to a Walgreens or Rite Aid or pharmacy clinic to receive that vaccination. We do not capture that data. So again, we're thankful, again, to hopefully see the light at the end of the tunnel to get us back to this new redefined sense of normal that we're all creating together. And just on the Department of Health website, as they report COVID-related cases in Red Clay, since we've offered in-person learning, they've reported roughly about 111 staff cases and then 84 student cases. But mind you, they go back to reporting data on September the 1. Again, so their data reporting goes as far back as September the 1. We didn't offer any in-person learning until October the 19. But thank you again to our school nurses, building level staff, teachers, educators, all those again, who continue to navigate this pandemic and showing that we put health and safety at the first and forefront of the work that we're doing as we look to, again, reopen schools eventually for all of our students and families. The state is continuing to be in the Phase 1B category. I do believe that they just opened it up for anyone who is 50 or older. So they're expanding those opportunities for those in the community to get vaccinated. The numbers before you are taken from my Healthy Communities website. As of yesterday, there were 122,712 individuals who were fully vaccinated. 116,000 of those individuals received a two dose. And then I guess now that Johnson &amp; Johnson has its vaccinations or vaccines out there, the one dose, there were roughly about 5,994. And there are still 84,755 as of yesterday who are waiting on their second dose for the two-dose vaccinations that have been administered. Just some exciting news on, on, on the Red Clay front, just as it relates to, you know, school safety. Never in a million years did any of, I know my cabinet, our district leaders or educators ever think that we would have to deal and navigate with a pandemic in this manner. I do remember the H1N1 days where we provided vaccinations in schools, but never did we think a year ago when we had a two-week initial closure that we would still be grappling with what we're grappling with. But testing and ongoing COVID testing is a part of a number of mitigating strategies and ensuring that we're keeping our schools safe. So we will be administering the antigen COVID testing. We'll start on Monday for our early learning center and our Meadowwood programs. And the reason why we've targeted those specific programs is because of the nature of, you know, the mask wearing and social distancing tends to be a challenge. And, and you know, again, for our staff members to be able to not only have that sense of security as we work through the program, but also for families to have that notification as a part of ongoing mitigating strategies. And we will look to expand testing to other sites throughout Red Clay. And right now, we have approximately 70 staff and students that are consented to participate in that program. Again, more good news. Students in our special programs, the Meadowwood program and First State School along with Project Search, who are currently attending in-person four days a week, will be invited to return five days a week, starting the week of April 12. Again, this is an opportunity for us to prioritize our students who we know have difficulties in a lot of regard accessing online based on their unique needs. And so we're excited and thank you to the Meadowwood staff for their collaboration and really working to ensure, again, that we are turning that corner and getting back to this new redefined normal that we're establishing here in Red Clay. For our in-person middle school and high school families, they did receive a survey last week, again, as we look to increase in-person learning opportunities. We do understand that our elementary school, the schools are currently in-person four days a week for those who chose in-person. And we're also looking to expand those opportunities to families. So we're monitoring that data and those survey responses, really looking at our school's ability to absorb those additional numbers, again, ensuring that we're following the health, safety guidelines established by the state to accommodate that. So for those families who dare respond to that survey, additional information will be coming out to you shortly regarding the choices. When we talk about teaching and learning, just to make our community aware, the Delaware Department of Education has submitted a letter requesting flexibility around the smarter, balanced state assessment. The state is looking to get flexibility from the US Department of Education. We're waiting to hear back from them in terms of what that means for us as a school district. We've also, and I want to thank Carol Beck and our English Language Learner Department, who has already actually started administering the access testing for our English learners. Of the 8,970 tests to be administered, we've already completed 78% of them. 30 tests are currently in progress, and then the 1,715 have yet to start. Prelimarily, we are set for March 24 for SAT testing and PSAT, excuse me, testing will run through the end of April, and our buildings are scheduling those tests for our students. And then AP testing is also scheduled for the first two weeks of May. And so that's kind of where we are on that front as we get additional information around that state testing and the implications for the Department of Education's request for flexibility. We will let our community know. We have not sat on our laurels as a district as it relates to the impact of this pandemic on learning loss. So back in, and actually in the fall, we have a research partner through Hanover Research. And so in the fall, we partnered with Hanover to conduct an equity analysis using data from the 2015, 2016 through the 2019, 2020 school year, really to examine disparities in academics and behavior outcomes across different student subgroups. This study followed in another analysis on which we commissioned and worked with Hanover to collaborate on exploration on the impact of COVID and what that impact has on students' learning, related to school closures and the potential learning loss that we can anticipate students experiencing as a result of where we find ourselves. And so the infographic kind of summarizes key findings from these analyses and noting that we're applicable projected learning laws. And again, this isn't anything that's definitive. These are projections that were used in terms of data points to determine where we need to prioritize our supports and resources to ensure that we establish not only learning recovery, but also look for opportunities to accelerate learning for students. And just a couple of points to note through Hanover, depending on the grade level, students may lose anywhere from 18 to 32% of a school year worth of learning and reading on average. And again, these are projections, and this is due to COVID-19 related closures. And this is something, again, that we're seeing nationally. But again, we're taking a vested interest here in Red Clay and making sure that we do a deep analysis to be able to prioritize and look at learning recovery for our students and not only that additional support in terms of professional learning for our staff. Average learning loss, actually in the area of math, are projected to be greater for students in particular. You know, when you look at students, with the exception of grade seven, again, grade seven seems to be an anomaly in terms of not really projecting out that learning loss. It's for us to go down a little deeper to look at some root cause analysis as to why this might be bearing out. But the learning loss projected, again, for black males in math, is actually greater for white students. And so there were some things in here that typically doesn't necessarily follow traditional trends that we might have actually looked at in a non-COVID-related year. And so we'll continue, as a district-level team, as a curriculum instruction department, to analyze this information and make mid-course adjustments and plan, not only for the future. You can go to the next slide, really looking at, actually looking at enrichment and extended learning opportunities present day. And so we know we can't wait till next year. Traditionally, there's always a summer slide, as it's stated in terms of students who might have a little regression in terms of learning over the summer. Again, we know what the impact of COVID has been. So I want to thank our cabinet, you know, Dr. Grundy, all of our building principals and leadership, Dr. Bond, for working with schools to create extended learning enrichment plans. And the planning teams at each school design programs based on their needs and needs within the context of that school. Each program uses small group instruction, while most programs are facilitated remotely. Warner actually implemented a Saturday Academy program in partnership with Hilltop. I had the fortune of spending my Saturday with some young scholars at Warner. And so I want to actually thank several of the staff members who, again, have already looked and began in this process of giving of their weekends to support additional student learning as it relates to the program that's been established. So thank you to Ms. Hall, Ms. Reagan, Ms. Rapsin, and also Mr. Taylor, Ms. Clark, who are working and providing supports for Warner students at Hilltop Community Center, and then Ms. Morris, who is actually supporting students online. We also have established a Monday, Tuesday tutoring program for our English learners. That program started on March 8 and will continue to run through the end of May. So these extended learning programs that each school has kind of established, we're really looking at 12-week cycle. And so we look at small group intervention in reading and math, targeted intervention for our English learners, targeted intervention for students with special needs, social emotional learning with small groups, again, really getting students connected back to school and doing that within a small group context. So again, thank you to everyone who has put time in to develop and support those programs. And then lastly, again, based on ongoing data analysis and supports and engagement with our schools, really looking at summer programming and what summer programming will look like, not only for our extended school year programs, but again, looking at enrichment and accelerated learning opportunities for all students with various community partners. For example, we're partnering with the Children's Defense Fund to establish a Freedom School through the Peter Spencer Family Life Foundation. We're partnering with Springboard Collaborative to have some programs within all of our city schools within Wilmington, again, to meet that ongoing need, but also various programs for students throughout Red Clay. So again, while we're working on not only trying to reopen, getting more children back in school, we're also prioritizing and programming for, we know, the ongoing needs to come. And so that concludes my superintendent report.
Thank you, Mr. Green. And now we move to items submitted by the board. I'd like to know which board members want to submit. I know Dr. Bone does. And so Dr. Bone will go first. But what other board members, so that we can kind of order things, will have items submitted by the board?
This is Jose Matthews. I have items as well.
Anybody else? I do. Okay.
You said you.
I do. Okay. So go ahead. Dr. Bone, do you want to lead off with items submitted by the board?
Sure. Do you want me to do my items submitted by the board and then do the information items later? Or do you want me to do everything together?
I think you should just do everything.
Okay. So I also have a committee report. So I'll go first with the committee report. So the diversity committee did meet on February 23, and they led off by talking about Black History Month celebrations. And Kim Stocker, Teacher of the Year, shared her Black History PowerPoint, which was excellent. So thank you for that. I was, I just want to mention, I was personally invited to a presentation at Heritage that Nikia Brady did with her students, and it was entitled Room 24 Celebrates African-American Achievers. The students did one-minute oral presentations where they talked about an African American that they admired and could relate to. And then they bought props in to show how that person related to their life, and it was absolutely excellent. So thank you for that invitation, Ms. Brady. They also, at the committee meeting, talked about the Student Diversity Committee, which was established in January of 2021, and that's for secondary school students. And that committee is still looking for students to join. We talked about the fact that CAB and Charter School students have combined their BSUs. We talked about professional development opportunities. And I just want to mention that the last diversity meeting is going to be in March. So that was the committee update. And then I do have a few items submitted by the board. So one of them was, has to do with the Charter School of Wilmington. And there have been reports of continued racism at the school that have been brought to our attention. So there's a great video entitled BSU Talks, and it's actually created by the students of CAB and Charter who have collaborated and combined with one another to talk about the experience, experiences that they have in their actual school. So I would encourage everyone on the school board and in our community to take a look at those videos. We also, I also want to bring up the fact that there continues to be racist Zoom bombings for the meetings at the school. And there was one that occurred on February 24 that caused a lot of people to talk. And as a result of that, during the following week, week of March 4, we had parents, we had educators, we had students, we had BSU moderators and communities who reached out to the CSW school principal, the school president, and the president of the board for support and to address the continued pattern of systemic racism at CSW. I was contacted by a number of those people, and I was asked to write a letter, which I did. And I wrote it to the principal, the president from the school, and also the president of the board, and I didn't receive a response. So I just wanted to say that CSW's lack of effectively engaging and anti-racism work at the policy level is really challenging because it continues to be brought in front of us. And it's especially problematic because at the last Authorization Renewal Agreement Meeting, which was in 2018, CSW was cited by the Red Clay School Board as needing improvement in the areas of DEI and governance. And at that time, that was one of the reasons they weren't granted the 10-year renewal that they were asking for. And at that time, that was one of the reasons they weren't granted the ten-year renewal that they were asking for. So here we are a few years later. Because now we're in twenty twenty-one and it still doesn't appear that this work is being done effectively. So to this endeavor, I think it would be exceptionally helpful if CSW could actually share where they, where they are in the process. Of addressing the demands that were listed in the July twenty twenty Black Charter Letter for Action, which was signed by over six hundred and thirty-seven alumni, students. Staff and community supporters. So thank you. The second item would be choice applications. And so I had requested the data for the choice application invitations at our last board meeting. And so Dr. Ammon and his team compiled excellent lists and spreadsheets of data. And I just want to talk about that data briefly. So I'll, I'll give some general overviews of what we see with the data and then I'll talk a little bit about specifics. So if we look at the choice invitations for CAB Callaway. We see that, um, well, let me just back up. First of all, all of the choice applications were basically down in all of our schools. But that being said, the choice invitations for CAB increased sometimes exponentially for all of our non-title one schools. So even though applications were down for all of our non-title one schools, the rates were really high for acceptance at CAB. So I just wanted to. Give some of that data. So if we look at. The schools I wanted to talk a little bit about more, if we look at. North Star, last year their acceptance rates were fifty-eight, at fifty-eight percent. This year they're at sixty-three percent. If we look at say Heritage, last year the number was twenty-nine percent, but this year it's forty-seven percent. If we look at Cook, the number last year was forty-two percent, this year it's forty-four percent. And if we look at Brandywine Springs, last year it was forty percent and this year was sixty-two percent. So we see their invitations went up. Exponentially in some of those schools. If we look at other schools like Highlands Elementary, we find that there was actually no change in the percent accepted. So for Highlands, last year fourteen percent. Of the applicants were accepted and received an invitation and this year was also fourteen percent. But if we look at other schools, we begin to see a very different trajectory, right? So if we look at say Lewis, Marbrick and Warner, the rates go down. By large margins and we can even look at Richardson Park where zero students were accepted for an invitation. So I just want to talk a little bit about those numbers. If you looked at Lewis, last year there was a twenty-five percent. Acceptance rate at CAB. This year it was down to fourteen percent. For Marbrook, last year it was thirty-nine percent. This year it's eighteen percent. And then if we look at a school like Warner, we were at eight percent last year and we were at five percent this year. So I think what we need to do as a district is to look at these numbers. And not just talk about them because we've been talking about these numbers for a long time and the fact that. The invitations for students to attend title one schools are very low in comparison to the other schools who, who get much higher rates of invitations. So I think we need to look for sustainable, long-term solutions to the inequity that we're seeing in terms of. Acceptance rates at our, at our magnet schools and our, at our charter schools. So that was one other item that I wanted to bring up. Then I also wanted to talk about. Two information items. So the first one is the one I talked about last month where I. I, I would like the district to look into continued hybrid meetings. For the district, once the state of emergency is lifted. Because we've heard from literally thousands of people in our community that they really, really enjoy. Having the option to participate via Zoom. And this last year has been hard, but one of the things we've been able to do is really sort of use our technology to make some things more accessible in our school board meetings would be one of those things. So I think red clay could be an innovator in this area by making all of our board meetings. Having the Zoom option as we move forward. The other thing I wanted to mention along with that is that at my job, all of our Zoom meetings are closed captioned. So that perhaps could be another thing we could look in as well. So anytime anyone's speaking and at, at my job, we have literally hundreds of people on our calls. Anyone who speaks, whether you're there physically, whether you're in, you know, participating from your house, there's a closed caption line at the bottom that appears so everyone can see what you're saying. So that's the other thing. And then my most exciting item of the evening is that. I work with many, many members in the community. So it's a community resolution in support of HB one fifteen. And that bill was filed today and it is sponsored by Representative Sherri Dorsey Walker. And it's co-sponsored by numerous others in the House and the Senate. So in the initial resolution, I had co-sponsors listed. Now there are so many co-sponsors that I just took the co-sponsors off. But I am introducing that resolution tonight. So it is there in the documents for people to look at. And I'm very excited that we will have a vote on supporting House Bill one fifteen. Next month. And I just want to say it will be released to the House Education Committee on three thirty-one. So if anyone's interested in looking at that, they can. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bohm. And now Mr. Matthews.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much, Dr. Bohm, for your wonderful presentation. I am certainly in support of a lot of the initiatives that you're working on. I know that you're putting a lot of work into the school board efforts. So thank you for your time and for your service. And I also wanted to commend Darrell on his superintendent's report. I was particularly impressed with some of the analysis work that we're doing in terms of learning loss. I think that's something that we as a board have shared concern with and we as a community have shared concern with. So to really see that data and the work that you're providing is something that I really appreciated seeing tonight. So in terms of my committee reports. This past Monday, due to a board workshop, I was not at the last facilities committee meeting. Our board had a conflicting meeting during that. Facilities committee meeting, but I do have an update from, from you from the district. There was an update that was given in regards to the facilities assessment. We are working on a facilities assessment that's going to be submitted to DOE versus certificate of necessity. And that assessment is due to DOE September first. If anyone would like to participate in the next facilities committee meeting, I do plan on, planning on participating at the next and that is June seventh, twenty twenty-one. I also attended the CAB Fund Board Meeting, which I also sit on. That meeting was March fifth, twenty twenty-one. We're still working on a lot of different initiatives, CAP Summer Applications. And going through with our mentoring program. So if anybody would like to participate. Please feel free to reach out. I also attended and sit on HB's one fifteens committee that helped form some of the legislation. On March twelfth, twenty twenty-one, I sat on the K through twelve inclusive curriculum committee. Where we ended up going through the bill and, and collaboration with a lot of support from red clay. Holly Goldner was there, Darrell Green was there, Dr. Bohm was there. So I was definitely certainly impressed and I appreciate the support that red clay does in terms of. Really engaging with the legislation that we're seeing and as it pertains to education and how we're going to be impacted. For the better in this case and really looking forward to supporting Dr. Bohm's resolution. I have read through it and it's absolutely excellent. I encourage the community to read it as well. I am still interested in working on the oral health and dental services. I have spoken to the district. I brought this up at the last meeting and introduced it and I ended up offering. To, to the board, to any member who, who was also interested in this to collaborate. And I have had conversations with the district and I requested some informations on the volumes and services that we've had in the past. Different collaborations which had been put on hold due to COVID. So we have that in the works as well.
And Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Relative to that, I did get some information relative to the dental clinics and obviously with, with most things due to the pandemic.
Yes.
There were very few students who were supported or serviced through it. We had schools, two schools in particular that actually participated, which was Forestoke and Ritchie. We had roughly about two hundred and seventeen students that participated in the last year and then COVID happened. The, the remaining nine schools. Were unable to participate, obviously, because the, the, the services weren't able to be rendered in, in a pandemic environment. So. We can definitely connect you with. Nurse Pennington in, in the buildings. So once we get those services, we establish to support students through the dental clinic. And bring whatever resources or insight that you may have relative to oral health for our students, because we know that's important to get that up and running again.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Superintendent Green. And lastly, in my information items, I have on the agenda a transgender and gender non-conforming policy request. To be submitted to the Policy Committee for draft and recommendation. So I moved that the Red Clay Consolidated School Board approved to send. The item of the transgender and gender non-conforming policy to the Red Clay Policy Review Committee for draft and recommendation.
So Mr. Matthews, since that's an information item, it would have to be, and I, a motion would have to be an item in, in the action items next.
He can, unless you want to make a motion now to just actually send it to the Policy Committee.
And that's.
Someone seconded, you guys can have discussion on it and it could just generally just go to the Policy Committee. Cause you're not voting on a policy, you're voting on the fact that you're just going to have. The Policy Review Committee along with the Diversity Committee who's already doing work in this space. To bring something back for the board that would be formal for you to actually then have it. As a formal policy to then look at and then vote on at a later date.
So it would be going to both of them?
They work in simultaneous because they're, they're helping to inform the policy. The, the Diversity Committee is already doing work in that space. So they would help inform that policy that the Policy Committee would establish. So it's still going to the Policy Committee. The Policy Committee would just. Use the work that the Diversity Committee, but subgroups were already working on. So I mean, if, if you want to make a motion, Mr. Matthews, someone can second and you're only asking for the Policy Committee to. Look at what was proposed in here and information, which is a model policy to then look at what would. Apply for red clay and that would go through Dr. Boomo's Policy Committee.
Okay.
Absolutely. And I can re, I can restate my, my motion just for clarity. So I moved that the Red Clay Consolidated School Board approved to send the item of the transgender and gender non-conforming policy. To the Red Clay Policy Review Committee for draft and recommendation.
Okay. Is there a second?
I would be honored to second the motion.
Dr. Bohm seconds, Mr. Matthews made the motion. Any discussion?
Absolutely. So I would like to speak to my motion. So after I introduced this type, topic and item last month. I received such positive feedback from the community. I, I really have to tell you, this is conversation that I've been really excited about and worked. I've been extremely thrilled to do. And it caught the attention of our, one of our red clay legislators, State Senator Sarah McBride. Senator McBride, the honorable, ended up sending a letter to our board encouraging us to pass this policy in full support. For those of you who don't know, Senator Sarah McBride is a red clay graduate. She's done an, an amazing job of engaging our board, coming to board meetings, speaking at board meetings, providing educational opportunities. I know that in recent years she did a wonderful series called transgender or gender revolution. Which was an educational series that she provided to the board and to the community. And in my research of, of looking at the dialogue that we've had as a board on transgender protections. I actually found when looking at back into our meeting minutes and at the agendas that. Jack Buckley, who I did not have the pleasure of serving with, but he ended up introducing that transgender protections be added to the student code of conduct. Over a decade ago or close to a decade, I should say, back in June fifteenth, twenty eleven. So I was certainly impressed by that. I know that transgender issues have come up on this board a number of times. So I'm certainly, you know, excited to have the Policy Review Committee draft something and rec, and provide some recommendations to the board. For our review and approval.
Okay. Any other comments?
I'd like to make a comment. So I am very excited about the work Mr. Matthews is doing in this area. And I just wanted to say that exactly three years ago. At our March twenty eighteen school board meeting. We moved as a board and directed the district to establish a committee to develop an equity policy to be presented to the board at its April twenty eighteenth meeting. For implementation in the following school year. So I'm very excited, although it's been three years and that is a long time. But the work we are doing as a district is continuing under our great new superintendent, Mr. Green. And I'm just really thrilled to say that. Three years to the date, here we are introducing yet another policy and creating more and more equity as we move along. So thank you, Mr. Matthews, for your hard work in this area.
Any other comments? Okay. Hearing none. Maria?
Dr. Bohm?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
Thank you. Okay. So I think we are ready for a motion for adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn?
No move, Dr. Bohm.
Dr. Bohm moves. Is there a second? Second?
Jose.
Ms. Sabo second. This by roll call vote. All in favor? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you very much and happy St. Patrick's Day, everyone.
Have a good night, everyone.
Night.